Ready? Veronica, you set?
I'm set.
All right, we'll call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZiel.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins-Hoggett.
Here.
And Hall.
Here.
All right, we're going to start with presentations. The first thing is Manufacturing Month proclamation. Aaron, do you have that?
I do. I have it. Okay. So, the City of Hudson, Wisconsin proclamation for Manufacturing Month. Month, I'm sorry. Whereas, the City of Hudson is home to numerous manufacturing facilities, and whereas these companies and their talented employees produce high-quality goods that are distributed throughout the United States and across the globe, and whereas these manufacturers employ hundreds of area residents, and whereas local manufacturing fuels local economic growth, both by through the employment of Hudson-area citizens and through the creation of local sector jobs that service the retail and recreational needs of these employees, and whereas local manufacturers require employees who are often trained in their crafts at area secondary and post-secondary educational centers, further adding to the economic impact of their manufacturing efforts. Now, therefore, I, Rich O'Connor, Mayor of the City of Hudson, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Manufacturing Month in the City of Hudson, and call upon all citizens to acknowledge and recognize the important and vital role of the city's manufacturing facilities and what they have in the growth and maintaining a vital economic base for the City of Hudson, given under the hand and seal of the City this fifth day of October 2020.
Excellent, thank you. Next up is the 2019 financial report.
Good evening. Allison Ager, Finance Director, April Anderson, our auditor should be on the Zoom meeting, and she will be doing a presentation on our 2019 financial statements.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. And what you should have received in your packet was an audit report notations. So, it's a four-page summary of the full audit report. That's 100-plus pages. We just tried to pull out the highlights that we feel are necessary for you to know as governance and management. And so, I'll go over that information, and we'll just go from there. On the first page, item number one is the auditor's report or opinion, and there you'll see that we issued an unmodified opinion. And so, that is considered a clean opinion or the highest opinion that you can receive. So, that's what you're striving to receive. So, that means your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and all the governmental accounting standards that you need to follow. And so, obviously, heads off to Allison and her team and others around the city that we get all the information from and have to work with as we go through the audit and draft the financials for the city. The next item, right under the auditor's opinion, is the management letter. So, as we go through the audit, we're not only looking at the numbers, and I'll report on some of the numbers in a little bit, but we are required to report out to you as far as any issues or concerns we have with the internal controls at the city. And here you'll see that we reported three material weaknesses, as called, and these are very common. The three that you see there are very common. We work with over 150 governmental entities in just northwest Wisconsin, and most of them have these three findings due to the size and makeup of the municipalities. It's just not usually cost-effective to try to be able to eliminate these. So, these are three that you've seen in the past. You have no new ones. They're the recurring ones that you have seen before. So, the first one is limited segregation of duties. And again, this relates to the different processes in the financial system, payroll, receipting, dispersments, journal entries, and not one person should have access to the different parts of one of those transactional processes, such as initiating the transaction, reconciling it, and reporting it. And I've already said how it's just probably not really cost-effective to hire on more people to try to eliminate this finding. But the key here is to continually assess the processes and controls so that you can, you know, move things around or add reviews and approvals in processes to mitigate the risk of something in error fraudulently occurring. The second one is material audit adjustments. And so, this relates to the fact that we do propose certain audit adjustments as we go through the numbers to help you get the books in, as generally accepted accounting principles in the reporting format. And so, you're actually, some of your records are where you have to report to the state a certain way, so you have regulatory reporting, and then you have financial reporting. And so, there's just some adjustments that we have to help and propose to make there. And so, but those have decreased in the last couple of years. So, again, they're just very common ones that we continually help with, and it's a common finding that we help many municipalities adjust certain accounts. Then the very last material weakness is the preparation of the financial statements. So, technically, governance and management are responsible for the financial statements, but you look to us to help draft those financial statements. I'm assuming Allison would attest to the fact that she probably doesn't have extra time on her hands to pull together 100-plus-page report, and so you guys are looking to us to help with that. And again, we do this for most of the cities and villages and counties that we work with. So, it's very common that you look to us to provide that assistance. And so, again, those are the ones that you've seen in the past. They're very common. So, what you need to be aware of, but nothing to be too concerned about. So, that is the overall results of the audit, and now we can kind of jump into some of the actual numbers. In item number two, we'll start with the general fund. And here you'll see that we tried to show a four-year comparison to kind of see any trends or how things have changed over the last few years. I'm not actually going to go over every line in this summary either, but this is pulled directly from the financial statements. What we see here for the general fund is you see your balance sheet at the top, your assets, and then your liabilities, and that the net of those two is your fund balance. So, that's what we really like to focus on, is that fund balance and what you have available in the general fund. And here you'll see that your fund balance decreased $1,281,000 during 2019, from 2018 to 2019. Now, that was a budgeted decrease, a planned decrease because of you did plan to contribute $1.5 million to the new fire station. And so, you actually, even though you contributed that $1.5 million, you actually, you know, came up above that with just the $1.2 million decrease. So, not really concerning there because it was budgeted, you were planning on that decrease, and so it's expected, and I hope nobody is surprised by seeing that in this report. What we do look at, as far as a benchmark of that fund balance, is that unassigned fund balance, the $4.9 million, to what your annual expenditures are. And so, you'll see that your fund balance is broken out. It's into three categories. It's overall $5.5 million, but that unassigned is really what you have available to you. The non-spendable relates to prepaid's up on the balance sheet or delinquent taxes that you have in your assets that aren't really available. And assigned fund balance is what you've set aside for certain purposes. And so, in that $535,000, you've set aside $450,000 for health insurance, so what your employees have earned at this point, but will need to be paid out into the future. So, that's responsible financial accounting there because you have the funds available to set that amount aside. And then there's also $70,000 set aside in that assigned fund balance for police and fire equipment, among a few other smaller things. So, anyway, the unassigned portion, the $4.9 million, what you truly have available to you, as a percentage of your annual expenditures, is at 50.4%. And so, that is at a very healthy level. The city policy is to have that around 22.5% to 27.5%, and we generally recommend 25% to 33%. And so, what that means is just that you have enough available for the unforeseen to occur, and you're at a healthy level there. And so, even though that percentage dropped from 69% last year down to the 50% this year, again, that was somewhat planned because you planned to use some of your fund balance and available funds for the fire station, among other things, and you're still at a healthy level at that 50%. So, no concerns there, and you still ended up at a good level there, and your general fund balance is looking good. I guess I'd like to, if there are questions, if you want, go ahead, and you can let me know, otherwise we'll continue to move on. We'll go to page two then, which gets into your special revenue funds, item number three. And these are considered self-sustaining funds. So, you have these specific funds set aside for certain purposes where you have revenues coming in to pay for the specific expenditures for the operations or activities. And so, here what you'll see over the past four years is just the ending fund balance of each fund. And you'll see that none of them have really changed too much over the last four years. So, they are performing, and the results are as expected. What you're putting into there is paying for the related expenditures that you have for these activities. You will see the very last one, the room tax. That was a new kind of set aside, starting in 2017. So, that's why you'll see nothing there in '16, and now you have some there the last three years, because that used to be reported in the general fund, and now you're setting that aside separately in the special revenue fund. Then we'll move to item number four, the debt service fund, and this is used specifically for that purpose, to accumulate the funds by either transfers or tax levy to pay for your annual debt expenditures, so principal and interest on your debt. Here you'll see, so generally, this fund will probably, usually has a zero balance or close to zero balance. You'll see that you have had a balance in there the last few years because what occurred is when you issue debt, you've been able to issue your debt with a premium. So, you've gained on that debt issuance, and so you are able to set aside some of those funds to pay for future principal and interest payments. And so, that's why you see that $260,000 balance there at the end of '19, which you can apply then to 2020 principal and interest payments. In the next section, you'll see the capital projects funds that the city reports, and the very top one is just that where you have your funds accumulating. So, your debt was issued into this fund in 2019. You issued $8 million, a little over $8 million in debt, and then some of that was spent on your capital projects and equipment. And so, you'll see that you have $5.4 million of that remaining at the end of 2019. And you'll see that that fluctuates every other year because you usually issue for two-years' worth of capital projects. So, that kind of fluctuation is normal for you at the city. And then the other two capital projects funds that you see there is the TID number five and number six. And so, these are newer in the last few years, and you'll see that those actually run deficits this year, or the last two years, both of them have had deficits, and that's very common. TID funds, usually you're kind of investing or putting in the project costs upfront to get that tax increment back afterwards. So, and obviously, that's the whole intent of a tax increment district, and so that's expected that you may have these deficits for a little while until the project costs are done being incurred and that tax increment catches up, so. The next section, item number six, is component units that the city reports. And so, here you'll see the library fund, the St. Croix Business Park, and the cable, the community access board. And so, here, again, nothing too extreme of changes between the, over the last four years that we see here, and so, no big changes that I wanted to discuss there, just there to show you what is occurring and what has happened. The next section, item number seven, on page three, we get into your enterprise funds. And so, the city reports for enterprise funds, and these report more like a business activity and where your charges for services are usually your main income to pay for that related expenditures. And so, here, the water utility, again, we show a little bit more detail here, but I'm not going to go through every line. We get down to how it performed this year as far as the change in net position, and you'll see that that increased $1.4 million. Now, that's obviously a big increase, and there's a lot that goes into the number. The actual operating income for the year was $280,000 plus, so your revenues exceeded your expenditures for operations by $280,000. The reason that you're seeing such a big change, a positive change in your net position, is because of you sold a property in 2019, and then there were some developer contributions that actually hit your income statement, too. So, when developers put in the main, in services and hydrants in an area, but the city takes on that maintenance, that developer contributes that infrastructure to the city, and so that's why you see such a big increase in net position in 2019. A benchmark that we look at here is called the current ratio. And so, that is your current assets, cash, and your current receivables to your current liabilities, so payables that are becoming due right after year-end. And you'll see that the desired there is at least a one-to-one ratio, and you're at 13.9. So, you're at a very good level. You have plenty of current assets to pay for your current liabilities there. For the sewer utility, again, kind of going down to the very bottom there as far as your ultimate results, you'll see that this year, or the last couple of years you had where your expenditures exceeded your revenues, you had the deficits there, but in the current year, you had $158,000 positive result there, and that is mostly due to the increased rates that you had at the beginning of 2019, your user rates. And so, you brought those back up to a level to be able to sustain and cover your costs that you have in that, to operate that fund and activity. So, then we'll move down to page four, where you have the last two enterprise funds that you report, and the first one we look at there is the parking utility. And there you'll see that the last few years, your expenditures have actually exceeded your revenues there, so you had $19,000 decrease in your net position. But going back to that current ratio that I talked to you about already, as far as with the water and sewer utility, your current ratio is at 7.8. So, again, your cash and available assets are still plenty to cover your current liabilities for that operation and that activity. And then, and then the very last enterprise fund, your ambulance service, obviously, that looks a little bit different this year for 2019, and that is because of that operations being sold or discontinued and moving elsewhere. And so, you'll see that a lot of that decreased. You're still reporting some activity in that fund, but that will, the remaining balances most likely will be, or are expected to be settled in 2020 or potentially in 2021 as that stuff rolls over and leaves the city activity. So, that is all of the activities and operations that the city does report and record, and then the very last item that we like to go over here, item number eight, is just what the city has as far as outstanding long-term obligations. And so, here you'll see the very top is your general obligation debt, and so this is what you would, you know, you levy for and you pay for with your tax levy. And that totaled $22 million at the end of 2019, and that's because you did have the debt issue, the $8 million debt issue, and so that obviously went up. And what we look at there is every municipality in the state, every school district, county, village, city, has a debt limit, and it's 5% for the city. It's 5% of the equalized valuation in the city. And so, you'll see at the very bottom of that section what your equalized value is in 2019, what your debt limit was, and then that $22 million that you had outstanding is 21.1% of your debt limit. So, you're at a very good level there. A lot of the municipalities that we work with in northwest Wisconsin, as far as cities and villages, kind of range about 40% of their debt limit, so you're at a good level there at the 21.1%. And you'll see that you kind of have fluctuated right between that 70 to, 17 to 22% range. So, you're at a good level there and a little room to move. And then, going back up, you also have mortgage revenue bonds, and so this is in your water or sewer utilities where that debt is backed by those user rates and the revenues coming into the utilities themselves. And so, there you'll see that the last couple of years, that increase for the water utility because you had the water tower and well activity, and so you took on new debt there. And then the very last item in this section that we report is the other long-term obligations, which is the employee leave liability. And so, this is an estimated liability for the vacation, sick, comp time that your employees have earned at up to 12/31/19 to be paid out into the future. And so, that kind of fluctuates right around the $500,000 mark the last few years. But again, what you have set aside, you have set aside some funds there in the general fund to help pay for some of this activity in the future as well. So, this won't be something that you have to pay out all at once or anything like that, but it's an estimation of what is earned at this point in time. So, again, this is kind of our high-level summary pulled together to help you understand and see what is reported in the financial statements, but not having to go through it one page at a time or one schedule at a time. So, I guess, is there any questions or anything else?
Anybody? Jim? Nope, just rattling paper. All right. Well, thank you very much. Nice job. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. All right, the next thing, this is a rare occurrence for me to be making a statement, but I thought it is timely, and I think it's important that this statement be made. "I've always tried to live my life by the golden rule. My personal, professional, and elective office life has been guided by one principle: do unto others as you would have them do unto you. One of my most vivid memories of first grade was being seated at my first assigned desk. Three things were in front of each student: lined paper for learning to write our letters of the alphabet, a pencil, and a ruler. Printed out the backside of the ruler was the golden rule: do unto others as you would have them do unto you." Clever. The golden rule was on the back of a ruler. "Every morning, we would say the Pledge of Allegiance and recite the golden rule. It was so impactful that I still remember that very clearly today. All cultures and all belief systems, ancient and modern, have taught and lived by the golden rule." Why am I bringing this up tonight? "Events in our community recent and over the past few years have caused me, as mayor, to reflect on the need for civility in our public discourse. We all see at the national and state levels that the lack of civility has infected our political process. It has also affected the way we treat one another, also exacerbating the situation as the current pandemic, which has created a sense of isolation among many and heightened stress among us all. Hudson prides itself on its beautiful landscapes, historic downtown, and vibrant community life. We are the most vibrant river town in the St. Croix Mississippi Valley. We have the reputation as a friendly, welcoming community. But unfortunately, we have seen expressions of hatred coming from all sides creeping into our city. Hatred is a sinister, forbidding force that unchecked can unravel the very fiber that binds us. As a city, as a community, the City of Hudson denounces hate in all of its forms." Let me repeat that. "We denounce hate in all of its forms, whether it is directed at race, religious beliefs, political affiliation, sexual orientation, or economic status. Our community is at its best when we draw upon the unique talents, gifts, and ideas of all of our citizens. I believe this starts with getting to know each other. Talk to your neighbors. Take time, listen to what others have to say, and I mean really listen, and consider other viewpoints without judgment or ridicule. We truly learn from each other, learn about each other by recognizing and celebrating our differences. Simply put, this comes down to having respect for each other. Simply put, this comes down to embracing and practicing the golden rule. Treat others the way you want to be treated. I think the issues and problems I have discussed are actually opportunities for Hudson to come together as a community with one voice. Therefore, tonight, I am announcing the Golden Rule Initiative. I'm calling on the city council, school district, library, service organizations in the city, the Hudson Chamber of Commerce, and all citizens to embrace this call for communal civility." There's going to be more to come on this initiative as I reach out and continue to talk with the school district, with the organizations and people that I've just mentioned, and will be bringing forth some initiatives and some action items in the not-too-distant future. I thank you for the time, for indulging me this moment. Comments and suggestions from citizens present? Is there anyone here who'd like to make a comment? Now, keep in mind, couple things. First of all, we do not accept comments from, for items that are on the agenda, later on the agenda. We are going to be doing something different. I have, it has been requested by council members, and I have agreed to limit comments to people that actually are residents of the City of Hudson or business owners in the City of Hudson. So, when you do come forward, please keep it to two minutes also. Things have gotten a little, let's just say, pushed the limits in meetings in the past, and everybody knows me, and you know that I like to and am willing to listen to what people have to say, but some of these meetings have gotten extraordinarily long, and people have a tendency to repeat other people's comments, so. If you are on Zoom, we can't see you, or I can't, please unmute yourself and just chime in. Like I said, I can't see you, so don't raise your hand. I'm not going to see that, but just feel free to chime in. So, once again, does anyone have any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, this is Andrew Hossan.
Hi, Andrew.
Hi. Hello, good evening. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your comments. That really means a lot, not only to myself, but hearing it from you and being a strong voice for the community. I really believe that goes a long way, and I love the idea of the initiative for the golden rule, and I'd love to throw some support behind that, and I look forward to working with you to see that through. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? We'll close that portion of the agenda consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from the September 21st, 2020 regular council meeting. Approve the claims in the amount of $1,923,768.68. Approve operator's license listed on the list sheet. Approval of a conditional use permit application for a structural
Approval of a conditional use permit application for a structural erosion control measures in a slow preservation zone at 1090 Front Street, Eric and Heidi Becken. Approval of certificate of compliance for Cortez Fisheries to operate a supermarket grocery store at 619 Second Street, Cortez Fisheries. And approval of the introduction of resolution 19-20 and to set a public hearing date of November 23rd, 2020 to partially discontinue a portion of public right of way for Crestview Drive, generally located north of 2,000 Crestview Drive for Hudson Ford.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second to approve. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
And Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Consent agenda is approved. Um, new business, discussion of possible action regarding the Safer Hudson campaign. Paul?
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I want to start out by saying that, uh, I'm not necessarily looking for a vote on this tonight, so, um, I'm looking for discussion. Um, I'm a big believer in Wisconsin open meeting law and we haven't had a chance to really talk about this at all. So I'm primarily looking for, um, council feedback. It's still kind of a rough shape for, and so, uh, I'm, my expectation is not to vote on this tonight, but rather to really get some feedback on maybe some strengths, some weaknesses, how, uh, if this is the direction we want to go and, you know, maybe how to do it better. So, um, the idea basically came to me about a month ago after we had the long discussion night on, um, should we do a mandatory mask mandate or extend that when the governor's ended? And, um, you know, that was a very close vote, um, and I respect that vote. So I have moved on to sort of say, what are maybe some more positive ways of, uh, trying to, um, reduce the risk of COVID-19 spreading in Hudson when the governor's mask mandate ends? So again, he extended, I think, to November 21st. We'll see what happens with that with, uh, there's a legal challenge or whatnot. So the idea is just to, I'm thinking is just to be proactive. I'm thinking it's to build a partnership with the business community. I'm thinking it's to offer the carrot instead of the stick. The carrot in this case would be, um, for businesses to have, uh, um, something in their store that would say that, you know, we're, we're requiring masks and social distancing, um, some sort of, uh, nod from the city on that, whatever that would look like. And then we would also, um, offer some, um, advertising on the city website for here's some businesses that are, are part of the Safer Hudson Initiative. The initiative is not designed to be divisive. It's, um, not designed to be controlling. It's designed to actually be volunteering. So it allows the total power of the decision-making to be in the hands of business owners, which is, uh, probably a good place for that, right? So the other thought I have is that, um, it might help both sides of this issue. We had a, um, people have strong feelings, right, on the mask issue? Yes, no? So what I like about the approach where it's voluntary and kind of highlighting businesses that, that would, um, that would require masks is that it would help people make decisions. You know, uh, if they're able to go to the website and families that want to wear a mask could say, um, you know, we want to, we want to look at a business that's participating. Families or individuals that don't want a mask could say, um, you know, we, we want to make sure that we're going to a place where we won't have to wear one. So part of this is trying to, trying to, um, communicate expectations, um, to the public, um, from a business standpoint. So I'm not necessarily sold on everything in the, um, proposal. I have some questions about the advertising piece I put in for the newspaper. I don't know if that's, uh, necessarily a strong piece of it. But I, I'm more looking for your thoughts, your feedback, if there's a way we could, um, shore some of this up. I, I just think we need to have some plan in place for when the governor's order does expire or get overturned or whatnot. And I'm just looking for a proactive kind of positive approach from the city, voluntary approach from the city. Everyone has a different view of, um, government, but I just want to say that, um, we do lots of things to help businesses in our community. So establishing the TID districts, we talked about in the report there, TID districts. Um, we do have a role to play and, you know, people might say, well, it's, it's not fair. What if you do it for this business and don't advertise for the other business? I get that, but I guess what I'm trying to say is really a policy decision. So in my mind, uh, and I kind of learned from you, Mr. Mayor, when we were talking about the parking, uh, last winter and, uh, one of the meetings, I don't know when it was, but you had talked about, um, free parking for seniors. And I, I love the line you used at that meeting because you said, "I, I'm looking for a policy decision." And a policy decision is a, is a judgment. And we agreed with you. We said, yeah, let's, let's do free parking for seniors. Didn't have to do it, right? But we thought this, this is good. So what I'm looking for is primarily a policy decision where we would try to promote, give the carrot, if you will, to businesses that are doing the best CDC practices. And the whole end goal of this is to increase public safety. So it's designed to hopefully, you know, curb the spread, hopefully save lives. So, um, that's where I'm coming from. But again, I'm really here to listen tonight, uh, to your comments and, and see where you guys are coming from. So thanks for your time.
I'll chime in, Rich. That's all right. Paul, I think you're well-intended, but I'm going to disagree with you. I think the government needs to get out of the way and let these businesses decide for themselves what's good for their customers and what's good for their business operating plan. We need to get out of their way and support them whether they have a decal in their store or not have a decal in their store. We're here for all of our businesses, not just one that abides by a feel-good policy. So I think that would be an overreach and this council needs to get back to the business of governing and get out of the way of personal business.
All right. All right. Thank you.
People in the area to know whether businesses are, um, following guidelines from the CDC. Um, I don't know if this is the, the right way to do it. I'd really like to hear from Mary Claire Potter, um, on, uh, what the, the chamber members are, are thinking. And, um, also I'm thinking that maybe, oh, they've already got their, um, their poster program, which if a business puts up the poster saying that masks are required, that is helpful to patrons to know whether or not the, um, guidelines are being followed. So anyway, um, Mary Claire, if you're available, if you've got some things to say, I'd really like to hear them.
Uh, good evening. Thank you so much. Councilmember DeZio, I really appreciate and others of you that have really put so much thought into this situation and how do we keep businesses and our communities safe? So thank you so much for all of your work on this. And I think, you know, businesses have done a good job in working to keep their employees and their guests safe during this time. Um, you know, the board is reviewing this initiative. They have not voted to approve it. I think it's very difficult to have the chamber be in a position of, you know, are we fol-, you know, are businesses following the guidelines or not? Because that is not our role. That is not what we do as a business organization. So, um, as councilmember Joyce Hall mentioned, you know, we have these posters in place and not every business has them. I'm trying to get them out and if businesses are interested, please reach out to us. You know, but really about be patient, be kind, keep others in mind and they can note how their business is open. You know, because of the mask mandate, you know, it is, everyone is to require masks, you know, and they can put on the sheet how many guests they allow in their business at a time due to their size, practicing physical distancing, using sanitizer. And then we have an opportunity for them to stay, state how they can stay connected to their business, you know, versus phone or online. I mean, all of us, you know, want to keep businesses open and running and that's important because employees want to keep working and businesses want to keep running because employees, you know, have rent and utilities and mortgages and all of those things to pay. And businesses have the bills that need, they need to pay too. So how can we best help support that? I think there's, um, you know, a number of things that we can do. I just, you know, from the chamber's perspective, it's very, we just cannot monitor, you know, if businesses are, I don't think that's our role to say, yes, you're doing it right or you're not doing it right. But we would love to have a seat at the table. You know, I think is this an opportunity to bring folks together from a variety of different businesses and that, you know, add in city government, adding county health and so forth? You know, this could be a part of the Hudson Area Crisis Task Force, um, the group that continues to, to meet that councilmember Alms kicked off. Thanks to his leadership, we are still moving forward and I think doing some good work. So is there a subgroup from that group that might want to talk about this? But yes.
The other comment that I've got is some of the businesses, the business owners are, um, expecting mask use. However, they're not at their businesses 24/7. And so there may be businesses that could be listed in this where the employees may not be always using the masks when the, their employer is not right there. And so how would we handle something like that? The other comment that I'd like to make is that I would really like to hear back from the, um, from Mary Claire, what the chamber board thinks of this and whether they've got suggestions and, and ideas before we, um, make any, um, have a vote or, um, make
Any other councilmembers?
Um, yeah, I thought maybe Mary Claire was going to jump in again, so I was kind of waiting.
Oh.
I appreciate, um, you know, the thought on this and I definitely, Paul, I appreciate you bringing it forward, um, to us as an idea, uh, for the city of Hudson, something we can do to be proactive. I, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, you know, from my perspective, there's a couple of facts we don't know. Um, and this has been said before, but, um, when is the state mandate going to end? Um, we, uh, we don't know if it's going to be before November 21st or on November 21st or after, but, uh, we do know that it's going to end, um, eventually because that's the nature of the world. Everything ends. So, um, we also don't know when COVID is going to cease to be a highly contagious, life-threatening, you know, pandemic that's trotting around the globe. But I think we can agree that there's a gap between those two dates. Um, our, our, um, our statewide mandate's going to end probably long before the, the pandemic, um, ceases to be a life-threatening, uh, fact and reality. So, you know, it's that time span in between those two occurrences that, that concerns me the most, um, as a, as a leader, as one of the people that are trying to, you know, stand up and serve our community, that, that time span is, you know, it, it's very concerning to me. We're seeing on the news, other cities are having skyrocketing numbers. Um, they're shutting back, some cities are shutting back down. And, you know, I think we can all agree that our common goal, uh, at this table is to prevent that. We don't want to have to have a shutdown. We're all interested in everything staying open. So in general, I really like the idea of us coming up with something proactive that can help, um, help to that end. You know, one of the things that really troubles me, I mean, yes, we're here to step out of the way of business, but we're also here to help the people who live in Hudson, the residents, the people we represent. And we're also here to encourage visitors to our fine cities. So, um, yes, we, we need to be very cognizant of, of, um, letting business owners make their own decisions and, uh, and running their businesses and staying out of the way. But we also need to bear in mind that we are also here to represent the citizens. This might be, um, maybe a hard way of saying it, but I'm, I'm one of the positions, um, and it's no secret that, um, I would like to wear a mask wherever I go and I'd like to go to places that require masks. I have three people in my house that have COPD, um, three people in my house that are elderly. If I bring it home and kill my family, I don't know what I would do. So I am going to shop at places where I can wear a mask and that I feel that everyone is going to be wearing a mask. So once the state mandate ends, um, I can go into a shop that says, please wear a mask, but that does not prevent, uh, people who are potentially walking around asymptomatic or even symptomatic, but yet walking around and, uh, possibly endangering me and my family. So I think, um, as part of helping all of the people who live in Hudson, who want to go out in Hudson, who want to eat in our restaurants and shop in our shops, it's reasonable for us to want to help all those citizens do that. And I see this maybe not as a perfect, uh, start, uh, but it is a, a good start of a, of trying to get to that conversation. To that end too, um, without something, because we know that there are going to be people, you can say, we require masks, but once the mandate's over.
They may think it's needed and ask yourself.
So once the mandate's over, it's not, you know, it's up to a shop owner to, you know, say, no, you can't come in here. I mean, it's just really hard on a business owner to, um, I think, I think having that mandate helps them a little bit, but anyway. My point is that, once it gets to the point where I can't reliably go into a restaurant or shop knowing that I'm safe, I will have to stop going. And I know that I'm one of, let's just say 50% of the population, um, that, that's in my position, that will cease spending money at locally, uh, at our local shops. So I'll be buying online and, and that hurts our local businesses. So when we have an option for both types of people to frequent the places they want to frequent, be you a mask wearer or a non-mask wearer, then we have 100% of the people free to go out and spend money locally. When you don't have anywhere that's reliable for people like me to shop, 50% of the people are going to quit shopping locally and that is harmful to business. So I, I just want us to carry on this conversation, um, in a respectful way about, you know, how can we achieve this where everyone is free to shop? Everyone feels safe. So we're not only here to help businesses run their business in the way that they want to, but we're here to help residents and visitors feel comfortable and safe going out and spending time in our community and in our, in our retail and restaurant establishments. So I think this is a great start. As Paul had said, maybe it's not, you know, we're not ready to vote on something today. Um, Mary Claire, I think, just offered up a conversation between more, um, more parties. Uh, you know, let's, let's get some more ideas from some of the businesses. What would they like to see? Maybe there's a group of people we could put together that, uh, might be able to flush out some of the details. But I would like to see something going forward because when, um, you know, it's that time, it's that timeframe between the stop of the mandate and the stop of the pandemic that we, we want to do the best for everyone. And that not only is our businesses, but it's our residents and our visitors. So I like the idea of, of possibly sending this to, um, I have, I'm not sure, who, a task force maybe or, um, someone to, to flush out some details. And it's nice that we're talking about this on October 5th. We have six weeks before the mandate might run out. So we have some time to maybe come up with something a little better. A little, maybe not better, but maybe something that we can get more people to get their arms around.
Anybody else? Thanks, Sarah. Anybody?
This is Jim Weber. I'm a, happen to be up in Monaco on vacation and one of our favorite restaurants we went to this morning and they don't have a sign and they helps not wearing masks. And on our way out, we said, we love this place, but we won't be back. That's it. You know, it's, you're, you're putting me at risk, putting us at risk by, by your behavior. Sorry. And it is, and it's the state, it's a state mandate to do this. So I, it's a violation, it's a violation of law in my perspective. So, and I've always been wanting this, us to do something to support our, our businesses. And this is, given the ugly reaction that we had last, at the last meeting about requiring, requiring this, I think this walks the line fairly well. The, so I would like to see us do this. I don't think we, I would like to see it started well before the end of the mandate. So I don't think we have until the end of November. We need to get this moving and rolling and, and getting people enlisted. I am concerned about the parts that say we're going to encourage people to frequent certain businesses. I don't think we want to phrase it that way. I think we need to put the information out there. These are the people who are, who have committed to this and this is about safe practices. And that's where, that's where it should end. We shouldn't be saying, and we encourage you, definitely should not be saying, we encourage you to visit these businesses. That's not our job. It is, it is important and a service that we could perform to say, here are the people who have committed to these practices. It ain't a big deal. So either do it, or if it's a list. So I'm basically in favor of this, of this process and move it on. The, the group that Mary Claire mentioned, I'm sorry, I've lost the name, that Bill almost helped get on, get on the road. I think that would be a pretty good group because it's pretty, from what I see, it's pretty cross-functional, crosses a lot of lines, so.
Crisis Task Force, I think is, is the word, the group that you're thinking of. So I, I like one idea out of this and it's, it's almost, it's kind of back to what Council Person Hall said, I think. Council Person Atkins also talked a little bit about it. It's almost like a legend, if you will, for people that want to shop locally, right? Who want to go to stores just to see which, which ones, if they are following a mask or not, and just knowing which businesses to go into. I, I think of my parents, right, who are elderly and want to be able to go safely into a business. I, however, kind of disagree with some of this. You know, I, I think of, I think of this as being a little bit divisive, putting out a decal to businesses, almost like giving them a thumbs up and you're kind of, what is the opposite to that? You're kind of giving a thumbs down to other businesses. Whether that's intended in that or not, I think that's the way that it would be seen. I think that, I think big, there's big business, and I'm not going to use this to name out certain big businesses, but I think the big businesses in town have, have certainly a big leg up. I go to a, a big box store, right, and they have somebody in front saying, you need to wear a mask. A lot of our small businesses just don't have the ability to, to staff a person to do that, right? And so I think this language and, and this sort of initiative is really built around our small businesses. And look, I'm a small business owner. It's, you know, it's not the easiest time to, to operate a business. And so I think everybody's just trying to get by when it comes to, when it comes to a business. I think, you know, it kind of goes back to sort of my perception about any of this mask mandate and anything that is health-related. I mean, at the bottom, at the end of the day, following CDC guidelines is what? It's health, right? It's a health mandate. You know, I, I look at implementing something like this, okay, so who's going to follow up? You know, is, is, are we asking staff to go to these businesses and follow up? I don't think that we have the staff to do that. I think if, if this were to be an initiative, I, I think getting, you know, the health department, do they think it's a good idea? Do they want to do this? I mean, I, I feel like what has started here may be worth considering, but I, I just don't know that we're, I don't feel like we're the right body of government to go down that path when it's, again, a health issue. We don't have staff who are healthy. Again, I, I guess I would stress that I, I do think there's something in here that is just more of an informational piece to the elderly citizens of our, of our community, the people that are at risk in our community of what those businesses, I don't know what that looks like. But I, I strongly object to the whole idea of a decal because I think there is a, there's an opposite to that. I think you're saying thumbs down to businesses that are not.
No, I think my response to the thumbs down is we're, we're allowing the people who choose to go into store with a decal or not to say thumbs down, thumbs up. That's the way I would look at that.
I know, but we are a city saying, hey, here's a, here's a decal, but we're not doing anything for the others. You know what I mean? So then we're giving preferential treatment to, to the ones.
No, no.
No.
We're saying, they're saying, we'd like, this is a, this is a initiative that we think is, helps improve the safety of our city, for our citizens and for the business owners. And if they choose to not do that, it's a lack of a decal. Now, if we put out a decal that said thumbs down, yeah, that'd be really, that'd be really making a very strong judgmental statement and I don't think we're in a position to do that. We don't have the, the resource to enforce it or to, or to, or the health organization to have that backing behind this. I think this, this is a good interim way to approach it.
I'll be a little bit more specific than on my point. I think it's the perception. I think there could be a potential perception by community people that that is what we as a body of government are saying. I'm just talking perception. I'm not saying what our intention is, I'm just saying perception.
Well, and I think to be fair, I am asking for a policy decision. I think it's a fair thing to say government and business can work together for public safety. So is there a value judgment in that, Bill? Probably, yeah. I don't think it's anti-anybody though, because then everyone who chooses can be a part of this. So I mean, wouldn't it be a great thing if all businesses say, yeah, we're, we're in this together? But that's the business owner's decision.
But I also like your point, Bill, to follow up. I also like your point about the information piece. I think that's really important. So even at a minimum, if that's what we got out of it was the information out to the public, like you said, for older folks or folks who want to shop at places, what Sarah's talking about, I think that's all great. I just like that, it's not perfect. I like us to do something and, and maybe at this point, what I'm, what I'm hearing is there might be interested in, interested in having the chamber work with this, maybe the county, health, you know, some kind of a task force or something to kind of work on this. I, I think that's a really smart move and, and give it to people who can weigh this from a lot of sides and come back, you know, sometime in the future, we can relook at it. So I'm, I'm totally good with that.
Can I offer something? So Bill, when you, when you're concerned, and I get it, you know, that the opposite of a thumbs up is a thumbs down, but this isn't a thumbs up. Nobody said that. Now, maybe if we somehow, sorry about that, maybe if we somehow reword it or, you know, we don't, we're not necessarily encouraging people to frequent them, you know, we can take that out. I, I don't need to encourage people to shop at places that have our, let's just call it a decal for lack of a better word at this point in time because it's too early in the conversation to have a definition of what that sticker or decal or whatever that is. But, you know, doesn't it kind of go both ways? That, like, I know that I've heard of people tell me, my mom won't or my aunt won't shop anywhere that she has to wear a mask. She drives all the way to, you know, New Richmond to this XYZ store to, to shop because she knows that no one's going to look down at her or even ask her to put on a mask. So it's, places are already getting the reputation of being, oh yeah, you know, I don't, I can go to that bar or that restaurant or this and they won't make me put on a mask to get to my table. They won't ask me to. So the businesses are already starting to divide up, but the problem that we're not helping solve is that there's nowhere, you know, it's really sad that this is so divisive, but it is. There are people, and we'll just say it's 50/50, 50 want to wear a mask, 50 don't. You know, maybe that's not the right exact number, but as long as you have people who don't want to wear wet masks, feel like they're free to go about every shop, then there's nowhere for the rest of us to go. So does, doesn't it go both the other direction? Like if you don't want to wear a mask and you're adamant about that, you don't want to wear a mask, well, now you know, here's a list of stores not to shop at because they're going to ask you to wear a mask and you don't want to wear one. So don't go into those stores on the list. So it, it helps both positions. It helps both people who want to wear masks and people who don't want to wear masks. And so it doesn't need to be viewed, and I think if we put it at the, if we tasked the right group of people, we could probably, you know, come up with a way that it wasn't a thumbs up and a thumbs down, that it is just a way for people to make good decisions about where they want to go and spend their money.
And Sarah, something that I thought of while you were talking was what if we had a list of retail businesses and then put an asterisk next to the ones that are strict about having a mask policy? That way, all of the businesses are listed, people would know what the businesses are and then they would know which ones are going to be doing the mask policy and then they can figure that the ones that don't, aren't.
Well, I, I think we're kind of going in a little bit of a circle just in general because we're, we're sort of talking policy, but we don't really know for sure if we want what the framework is. So I think what's come out of this really, to me at least, is it sounds like that crisis task force might be a good place if Mary Claire could, could have the kind of draft on that agenda for them to start discussing and see what kind of input they could get. And then also, if the chamber board is going to be talking about this as well, they can provide that input to that task force and maybe they can review something like this and, and try to come up with something they could recommend back to the city and possibly even the chamber board to discuss. Because I do lean towards a little bit that, you know, I, I, I have some concerns with how it's set up right now too, and I've talked to Paul about him, so he, he understands that a little bit. But I think it would be good to get that input from that, from that task force since it is a broad range of people on it, representing businesses and nonprofits and things like that. So it might make sense to throw it that way and see, and it might be something that that group could even come out of with something where it doesn't have to be even city-driven, but it could be something that comes out of that group, either as something from that group or something from the chamber or some, maybe even some other local organization that maybe it makes more sense for them to do, take the lead on the initiative considering that it's not a mandate, it's not a requirement, it's not something that, you know, the city staff's going to be enforcing. That group may, may have some better ideas about not only the program itself, but maybe who should be spearheading it and, and kind of leading the initiative that may not be us.
Paul, what would you like to do?
Mary Claire from the chamber, if I could just jump in too, just to clarify. Like I said before, businesses are really working hard to keep their doors open and this is a really hard time to be running a business and working with your team. And just to be clear, that the chamber is not in the role of, you know, pointing out which businesses are doing things right or, or not. That's not our role. Our role is to support all businesses and to just be sure that the businesses have the tools that they need and how we can help promote them to be successful. So this is not an initiative, you know, I think that you could decide if you want to make a policy decision, but it's not necessarily an initiative that the, the chamber will take a lead on. You know, I am getting input from the board and we could certainly bring it to the Hudson, you know, crisis task force. But I just want to be clear that we are here to support all businesses and help the business community.
Paul, what are you thinking?
Well, I, I mean, I, first of all, I just really appreciate the discussion because I think this is what city council should be about. It should be bringing ideas and bringing perspectives and people feeling safe enough to, to voice their concerns and ask questions. This is really constructive, I think, as opposed to some other meetings we've had, just kind of highly emotionally charged, you know, things going on. So I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness. I think that local government in this particular case is the only one big enough to initiate this initiative. It's just the only thing that can do it. It's the only thing that has citywide authority in that sense to encourage something. And it's not a mandate, it's completely volitional. So it's, it puts the decision-making power in that respect on the business owners, which I think is a great balance. All we're asking for in this is a partnership, a partnership that says, this city council is concerned about public health and we'd like to do something.
So what do you want to do, Paul?
Well, if I'm hearing Mary Claire correctly, it sounds like it's not a good idea to bring it to the, the chamber and task force. So I'm wondering if, I'm wondering, Erin, if we could refer this to city staff just to hone the proposal a little bit.
Well, what actually, what I would say is, I don't, Mary Claire said not the chamber, but this crisis task force isn't a chamber task force. It's kind of a standalone entity. And I think, Mary Claire, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you would be okay with that group taking a look at this and trying to provide some input. Was that right?
Yes.
So I think that's probably the smartest way is let's let this crisis task force take a look, see what they think, and then we can kind of go from there. Because like I said, they may think of an entity that could take the lead. And I'm not, like I said, Paul, you know my kind of opinion on, on the city role in taking a lead, but that group, just because it's a diverse representation on it, they may have some ideas about, well, this actually might be better if our group did this or this group did this. So I'm just saying, I don't want to presuppose what they might come out with, but I think if, if we're going to take a look at this, it would be, it'd be good to let that group look first and then see where that goes.
Yeah, I'm totally good with that and, and bringing it to the task force. I think it, it was never intended to be in its final form tonight. I'm just trying to simply get the ball rolling. So I, I realize there's a lot of, you know, imperfection in that piece I gave you, but my intent is just to get the ball rolling so we can come up with something good together as a council with the task force. So, so do we need a motion for that, Erin?
No, we don't need a motion for that. Mary Claire, do you, why don't you and Paul just circle back together and figure out how you want to present that to the task force?
Yes, thank you.
Does that work, Paul?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
All right. Discussion, possible action on city COVID-19 response, Erin?
Yeah, I apologize. I think the county's kind of been very busy lately, understandably, and then also I think they have their hearing coming up this week too, that they're preparing for. So we did not get any updated data on the city this week, so I would expect that we'll have updated data for next meeting.
Sounds good. All right, I don't have anything. Like I said, I'll get back to everybody, talk to the principals that I mentioned with regard to the golden rule initiative. Anybody else?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your statement. I really, I really appreciate your courage. I really appreciate your words. It felt very healing to hear that tonight, so thank you for making that statement.
Thank you, Paul. One thing I would like to say, and I, and this isn't just to you, this is to everybody, truly, it does not take courage to stand up to hate.
And I'd like to say thank you too for that statement. I think that it was very, very important and a sign of leadership to, to give that statement. The other thing I'd like to ask for is, I'd like to put on the agenda, Erin had sent out information about a Polco survey on racial equity and other inclusion issues, and I would like to see that on the next agenda so that we can talk, have a discussion and possible action on whether we would, the city possible action on whether we would, the city would use that survey.
Okay, yeah, we've got that. All right.
Who to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.